Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting at the City Council, which is held in the municipal conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5 p.m., Tuesday, July 23rd, 2013. For the purpose of a proper session, in addition, we make it so that our motion is going to close the meeting on orders of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds? Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Ruff?
Thank you. This is the cover of the December 2012 edition of the Virginia Municipal League Magazine. Typically, their December issue tees up what's going to happen in January, the following January with the General Assembly. As you can say, see, the cover says it all. They were predicting that the 2013 session of the General Assembly would be about money. And it was. It was about money and how to use the state surplus and how to get more money into the transportation plan. So tonight, we'd like to give you an update on what's happened since the close of the General Assembly and what lies ahead for 2014, the hot issues that we see. Again, they can use the same cover next December. It's going to be about money. And money is going to impact us. It's going to impact us in education and transportation and then general aid that we get from the state, things like 599 money. And so to give us this presentation is our Director of Intergovernmental Relations, Sherri Neal. And we're so blessed to have Sherri because she has such finesse in dealing with the state. Okay?
Thank you, John. This evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of council, city manager and staff. This evening, it's my pleasure to provide you with some information regarding our preparations for our legislative packages for 2014, and that's for state and federal. In this presentation, I'm going to give you some key dates. I'm going to identify some upcoming hot issues at the state, regional, local, and federal levels, and recap important dates and related activities. At the end of the, the ending of the 2013 General Assembly session actually began preparations for the 2014 session, as John was relating to the ongoing committees and commission meetings being held at the General Assembly relating to carried over legislation. Virginia First City has held its annual spring meeting, and we discussed issues there. Virginia Municipal League has also begun working on its 2014 legislative package. They already met with their legislative committee, and this week they're going to be meeting with their policy committee members in order to develop their package. The Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization ad hoc legislative committee has also been meeting to discuss legislation that might be supported by the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization and Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. So first, we're going to look at some key dates for the development of the legislative package. Beginning on the 5th of July and through the 16th of August, we have started our citizen engagement portion, where we are accepting suggestions from all Portsmouth citizens, business owners and operators within the city, city staff, city department heads, city agencies, city boards and commissions, members, elected and appointed officials, including our school board and their employees. All are invited to submit suggestions. There is a link on the city's webpage under, on the right side of the page, on the council at the bottom. It says legislative information. You just merely click on that link, fill out the form, and it comes directly to me. We will be accepting, again, suggestions from the general public and all those persons I've mentioned through the 16th of August. This information is also going out on the city's Facebook page, as well as been put on the city's bulletin board on PCTV. From the 1st to the 9th, I'll be contacting each member of council individually to find out if you have any suggestions for submissions to the package as well. The 19th, I mean, through the 9th to the 1st is when I research, analyze, and compile the items for the legislative draft. On the 19th of August, the governor is going to be meeting with the Joint Money Committee so that he can discuss his plans for the $261.9 million surplus that was realized by the state in FY13. On the 9th, we plan to come before you again and present the draft items in our package. On the 16th is council's community meeting at Woodrow Wilson High School, and that will be the last opportunity we'll have for any citizen input into our legislative package. On the 7th of October, we're scheduling council's joint meeting with our General Assembly delegation, and we'll look at the final draft of our legislative package. And on the 8th of October, we're looking forward to council adopting both packages by resolution. Continuing into November to January...
Before we leave, is that schedule okay with you guys?
Sure.
We're trying to maximize civic engagement.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I love that it's on the webpage. There's a link to do that.
To...
That there's a link on our webpage for civic engagement.
Yes. If you go on the webpage and on the homepage, on the far right corner, you'll see the council picture, and there's some links under it. The very last link says legislative information. When you click on that link, it gives you the instructions, and then it'll take you to the form. Moving to the November-January timeline, of course, November 2nd is an election day. It's a big election this year. We've got a new governor coming in. We'll have a new executive administration at state level. We also will be receiving a new senator that will be representing Portsmouth, being that Senator Blevins is retiring. On the 18th, the prefiling of legislation begins for the General Assembly. The 19th and 20th House Appropriations Committees Retreat will happen. The 20th and 21st is the Senate Finance Retreat. On the 6th, prefiling for legislation ends. And on the 16th, the governor will present his budget. And of course, on the 3rd of January, the 114th Congress will begin. And on the 8th of January, our 2014 General Assembly begins. And for those of you who may understand what the prefiling means, the General Assembly has passed a rule that allows the members to submit as many pieces of legislation that they want to submit between the beginning of prefiling and the ending of prefiling. After prefiling ends, then they have a limit on how many bills that they can submit without consensus of the entire body. All right, moving on to some upcoming hot items.
Again, everybody comfortable with these dates?
I'm sorry? So looking at some statewide and regional issues on the horizon, first is the possible elimination of the Business and Personal Occupation Tax and Machinery and Tools Tax, otherwise known as the DEEP hole and MMT tax. This particular tax has been under fire for the last several years at the General Assembly. We have fought vehemently to retain it. We don't want them to remove this tax without providing us a replacement to keep us revenue neutral. If this tax was to be eliminated without being made revenue neutral, you could see the loss to the city of Portsmouth is about $1.7 million in revenue, which could equate to, at the current real estate tax rate of one cent so on a penny, a 2.5 percent increase in your real estate, in our real estate tax rate.
Is the chamber still supporting that, Sherri?
I would hate to say equivocally yes, but being that most business persons do not like this tax, I would say probably, I would err on the side of saying they are. The next item is possible revisions to the Enterprise Zone Program. You recently had a presentation on this topic, and you were informed that this program was originally implemented to aid distressed localities. In the past three years, there's been a move underfoot to change the designations and move it from being the entire distressed locality to being census tracts, because more localities want to buy into the program. If that should happen, it's going to increase the competition for scarce dollars. Portsmouth currently has one zone. We applied for the four available zones that are open now, and there were 11 applications for that, for just those four zones. So you can see moving forward, especially in 2015, when the zones are dropped from 57 to 30. If these changes are made and no more money is added to the program, it's going to cause a lot of problems. So we've been working against those changes as well. This chart has been included in here, just to give you an idea of what was done with the surplus from the general fund in this last General Assembly session. This is the fourth consecutive surplus that the state has realized. And as you can note from the highlighted portions of it, the rainy day fund took up a considerable amount of the money. Direct aid to K-12 education was the next largest one. And the only, really only real money that we realized, local governments realized out of that was the elimination of aid to locality, which was at 45, 50, 60 million dollars that all localities had to revert back to the state for the last couple of years.
You know what she's talking about. A couple of years back, the General Assembly said, "You've got to rebate money to us." And so each year, we had to stroke a check and send money to Richmond. And so that's been now terminated.
What was our portion of that, about 2 million?
Cheryl, do you remember?
I'll go.
We'll have that in a minute.
Sure.
That's great.
This chart shows the decline. In-state general fund aid to localities for state administered programs, and as you can see clearly from the chart, 2014, we're only receiving about 44 percent of the general fund money for local governments. Our 599 aid to police, which we fight for constantly every year, has declined over the years. And then in the last couple of years, we were able to keep it whole harmless at the 172.4 million.
And let me refresh your memory on what 599 is. 599 was the legislation, and it now is called that forever. It results as the history evolved about annexation. When the counties went to the General Assembly, said, "You've got to put a moratorium on annexation because cities are gobbling up our tax assets when they expand their boundaries." Urban city says, "You don't understand. Urban cities are dying, and we've got to expand our tax base." So the General Assembly was in a quandary, and they did a study. They said, "What do we provide counties and cities that's the same?" And they went down road maintenance. Okay, we give cities road maintenance funds. We maintain the roads in counties. We give them education that's pretty equal. And they got down to public safety, and they said, "In counties, the sheriff not only does court security and process serving, but they also is, they're the local police department. But we fund the sheriff's department because it's a constitutional office. But we don't provide any funding for police departments." And who had police departments? Cities and towns, not counties. And so they got this idea that, that we create a pot of money and make it available on an allocation formal basis for those units of local governments that had bona fide police departments, which at that time was nothing but cities and towns. And they created a threshold amount that it could not drop below that threshold amount, and if it did, then they would remove the moratorium on annexation. And it was a gracious plenty above that threshold amount, so it never dropped below. But if it did, the trigger would be automatically pulled, and it would be open again for annexation by cities. And of course, this doesn't impact us because we're surrounded by cities, and cities can only annex from counties. It cannot annex from another city. So that brought about the moratorium, and guess what happened? Counties started getting a sheriff's department. James City County's got one. Prince William County's got one. Prince George County got one. A lot of counties have police departments and a sheriff's department, too. So the money's getting polluted, or diluted, I should say, diluted. And they also removed the threshold floor. So this is a real threat to the cities. This is something that we need to watch, is make sure that that 599 money is not raided for some other purpose. It will create a big hole in our budget if it is raided.
What's the difference in the public safety line there?
Public safety are the general things that we get in the way of...
Grants, DUI grants.
Yeah, I was going to say...
Checkpoints.
Checkpoints, DUI, different grants that support the traffic safety function, DUI, and things like that.
Like the grants for vests and...
Body armor.
The power programs that, you want to talk about what power programs?
The aid to locality, the war for life. That's the biggest ones, LMPG, and certain money.
Okay?
The other argument that we continuously made, especially Virginia Municipal League, thank you, John, with the 599, one of the caveats is that as the general fund receives an increase, then that line is supposed to be increased as well, but it hasn't happened. So we continue to fight that battle at the General Assembly. Oh, and lastly, you'll note at the bottom, you'll see that these two charts were from Jim Regenbaugh from Fiscal Analytics, and these were presentations that he had made, excerpts from presentations he made to Virginia Municipal League and also to Virginia First Cities. For those of you who aren't familiar with Jim Regenbaugh, Jim Regenbaugh was once a staff member for the Senate Finance Committee. He did that for a number of years. Upon his retirement, he opened his own business. He contracts with Virginia Municipal League, with the Virginia Association of Counties, and Virginia First Cities. He's very highly regarded as statistician in the state of Virginia. Continuing on with statewide and regional issues, coming up in 2014, we'll be looking at re-benchmarking for K-12 education and a new local composite index. The local composite index, or LCI, indicates the locality's ability to pay. Portsmouth's current LCI is at .2755. What they look at in this composite is true value of property, adjusted gross income, taxable retail sales, the ADM, and the total population. It's somewhat similar to the fiscal stress measure that you heard about earlier, but this is for education money only. Currently, our, again, we're at 2.755. And out of the 135 Virginia municipalities, which is 95 cities and 39 counties, Portsmouth has the 19th lowest composite index out of all of them.
And see, the lower the index, the more state aid you get for education. If, what the state is saying, if you're a rich community and have a good tax base, we're not going to give you as much state money for education. So the lower the score, more money. The higher the score, less money.
We're the 19th lowest.
We're the 19th lowest. And we were lower than that, but about two years ago, when the city increased its tax base, its taxes, that increased our index. So whenever you go up on your taxes, that changes your index level as well.
So no new taxes.
More money from the state.
That's right.
No new taxes.
Moving on to street maintenance funding. This is also a very big issue. On July 8th, the council received a presentation from James Wright on road maintenance. The Commonwealth Transportation Board, VDOT, are currently studying this issue. There's some contention, well, not contention, but thought on the part of CTV that cities are receiving too much money and that...
How can you imagine?
That we're, and we're not using our money the way we're supposed to use it. So they had requested a study to be done by VDOT. VDOT came back with the results on June 9th and justified the fact that cities are generally giving 30 to 40, adding 30 to 40 percent over what the state gives for maintenance, which really falls in line with James's presentation of the delta of $5 million between what the state provides and what we put out, which comes to about 36 percent. So we're right in that ballpark. So VDOT came back with this particular, with the results. CTV wasn't particularly pleased about it, so they're still looking at it. With the passage of the transportation bill, there were some opportunities that were presented for changing the funding priorities. And one of the things that pushed this particular bill was that you were going to use some of the transportation money, the new money, for maintenance. However, in the VDOT's six-year improvement plan, as you can see here, they want to increase street maintenance by 3 percent only for '14 and '15, and then drop it to 1.9 percent for the rest of the years. So we're going to be fighting that issue as well.
And think about this. I mean, what reality, what planet are these folks living on when they think that first localities are getting too much money, that the issue is maybe a redistribution? When that's not the case. The case is, is that we've got a delta, and if it costs $1.4 million to do road maintenance, we're only getting $1 million from the state. Well, then, the next allegation is, okay, you're using the money wrong. You're not using it wisely. You're doing it, you're spending it on frivolous things. Our money goes into the roads. It goes into resurfacing the roads, filling potholes, all the things necessary to make the roads, keep them safe and travelable.
And also, while we were on this note, House Bill 2313, transportation money, there's still some confusion about how the money's going to be spent, the regional money. What projects it should go for? Should it go to local projects, or should it just be spent on a mega project that's going to help the whole region? Another problem with that particular bill is that, which I didn't include here, is there was no dedicated transit money included in there. Northern Virginia did receive the ability to use some of their funds, from their regional money for transit. We were not given that ability. And as you probably well know, we need more money for our transit and a reliable, sustainable source. So we're hoping that we'll be able to go back and revisit that bill in the upcoming General Assembly so that we can also have the ability to use some of the 2313 funds for our transit, which will help lessen the burden on the localities to some degree.
And Sherri mentioned these mega projects. The mega projects are so big that there's not enough money generated by this new scheme to provide the money to build these projects. So, okay, let's use this as debt service then. Well, then who issues the debt? The legislation did not include bonding authority for the planning district or for the transportation planning organization. So that's a defect that needs to be looked at. And then, you know, once they solve that, then you've got to go through the whole process of the creditworthiness of that organization. They're going to have to get raided, just like we get raided when we issue debt. So there's ways to go if we want to use this money as a region, as debt service, in order to get a bigger pile of money to do these mega projects.
There was almost a cry at the meeting last week, and Sherri, you were there, by Senator Wagner and Staley, and a couple of them were all in lockstep pleading with us to not take that funding and do local projects. They wouldn't say why, but they said, "If there's a misunderstanding here, we're certainly straightening it out next year and the upcoming year." So they said the intent of carving out this money for a House Bill 2313 was for the mega projects. And so if you just look at, what, in five years, 2313, we should have, what, about 5 million?
5 billion.
5 billion dollars. And if you're going to do a third crossing, that's going to cost you about 5 billion. I mean, or you're trying to widen or more. And you're talking about widening 64, doing internal and external widening of 64 to get from here out to 295. That's going to be a major ticket item that would just suck that money up. But I didn't understand what they were saying, but they came in like gangbusters, telling all the localities, "Just calm down. This is not what we had intended." And then the CTV was saying, "We want to work and focus on these local projects," which I took. The CTV is going to get us money that we're hoping to use this money for, and they're saying, "No, don't do that." So I'm sitting there looking at Brandon going, "What's this mean for our Churchill and Bridge?" Because, again, so they have not decided, and they've got something up their sleeves, and I guess they weren't clear to the locality, so we'll get to the bottom of that. But they want the money for the mega projects.
Sir, and there are three major factions at play here. One is the Commonwealth Transportation Board. One is the General Assembly delegation, members of which sit at the H, I mean, the TPO. The Transportation Planning Organization is mandated by a federal transportation act decades ago, more than three decades ago. And so it's a for-real organization, and they get a say. So you've got the Commonwealth Transportation Board, you've got the members of the General Assembly, and then you've got us.
And Thelma Drake and her bunch.
She can make a job, I know.
Joyful.
The next issue that's going to come back is casino gaming, toll reduction and mitigation. Senate Committee on General Laws and Technology asked that the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization undertake a study of this matter. That letter, the letter's going to the H, our TPO. The study results are going to be presented to HRTPO and PDC in the fall, with the results being sent back up to the Senate Committee for deliberations during the 2014 General Assembly session. Norfolk did support this issue in its 2013 legislative agenda. Since we've been working with this, and this issue has been on the plate, other localities have shown some interest, such as Chesapeake, Hampton, Northern Virginia. There will be a potential reintroduction of this bill in 2014.
Stay tuned.
You can go anywhere, isn't it?
Lastly, our favorite subject, the Midtown Downtown Tunnel, toll free. The Supreme Court's going to hear this case in September. Decision may come down while the General Assembly is in session. If the lower court decision is upheld, then General Assembly may attempt to solve the toll issue via the adoption of some type of legislation. Therefore, we must be actively engaged in any attempted legislative fix. Turning now to the federal legislative package, hot issues. Things to monitor would be the impact of the continuing 2014 resolution on any city programs, such as housing, CBDG money, things of that nature. Monitor sequestration and any possible impacts it may have to the city services and the military in our area. Advocate for House passage of the Marketplace Fairness Act, which you may remember was part of the House Bill 2313 transportation bill to raise money for transportation in our area. If this is not passed within a certain amount of time, there's going to be an adjustment in the tax rates to offset us not receiving this money. And the Marketplace Fairness Act actually is the ability to tax internet sales. We'll also be advocating in the House for the Water Resources Development Act, looking for any possibility of BRAC reductions going forward, and monitoring the tax reform against the limitation of tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. Currently, we have a letter being worked on right now by our federal lobbyists. They've put a draft together for us to look at and to add some information to, so that we can get it up to our senators, because they're working on that particular issue as we speak. So in summary, your dates, again, the July to August timeframe is when suggestions are being accepted for possible submission to our legislative packages. In September, you have the presentation of the draft to council, input from the community meetings, any changes from council will be included, and revisions to the drafts will be completed. In your October timeframe, presentation of the final draft to council, the joint meeting with the General Assembly delegation with council, and approval and adoption of resolution of your legislative packages in October. November, December, meetings will be held with our Portsmouth delegation members to discuss the legislative items and secure sponsors for our items. And in January, the General Assembly session begins in the 114th Congress. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, please comment.
Sherri, high-speed rail. It seems like whenever we talk about... It seems like whenever we talk about transportation, there's little or no information on that. I've got a feeling some things are happening behind the scene. And, you know, Hampton Roads, hopefully, some work's being going on to present our interests and making sure the high-speed rail is got a stop in Bowers Hill versus circumventing the region. You know, we've got short chains on light rail, but do you have any update on what's been going on? I've got a feeling some decisions are being made.
Actually, this time I do not, but that's on us.
Yeah, we were essentially left out of the national plan. The national plan had high-speed rail coming down the northeast corridor, going through Richmond, and then going southwest of here. Typically, think about from Richmond to Coria to Raleigh and south. Right. Through the efforts of the Future of Hampton Roads, they worked hard, and that's a think-tank group that was formed maybe 26 years ago. They tried not to have elected people, or just, but elected being primarily General Assembly members. But they got very much concerned about high-speed rail, and was able to get quasi-high-speed rail along the 460 corridor, and was able to get the region to agree that it go on that corridor, not on the peninsula where Amtrak is. And so instead of having a kind of a food fight between the south side of Hampton Roads and the peninsula, the region came together and said, no, the right corridor is 460. And there does need to be a stop somewhere in the Bowers Hill area, not just in Norfolk.
Any update on how that is progressing? I know that's been a contention, a lot of competition.
Admiral Taylor's been bird-dogging that, and he actually came and briefed us last year, and they tried to dismiss him, but I think he's been very factual and right on their heels, and some on the state level has tried to dismiss some of his concerns, but I think he's right on point. And I think he briefed us last year about this timeframe about some of his concerns and all.
It would be good to get him to come back, too. Yeah. He is, he's done a lot for transportation in this region. He led the effort to transform the TPO from being a group that just met because they had to meet, to being a group that really has teeth. And the reason why that was important is that you lose out on federal dollars if you don't have a real active, aggressive TPO.
I think, go ahead. I think one of the things is, we need to make sure we're in front of the engine, instead of bringing the cars up from the rear. And that has been our problem in the past. We have not aggressively been there as a part, because this has come about before, and it dropped. So we just need to make sure that we're at the front of that train, instead of being with the caboose. We have a lot at stake, and we don't need it to pass us by again. And we can be locked in like we are with two tunnels, and they're putting tolls on them.
They're not going to do it.
They aren't going to do it. No, we're going to march on them. I'm going to lead the line with the American flag, because I think we've done more and paid more in our fair share than any of the other areas. And they are getting most of the benefits, and I don't want us to lose sight of that.
That's a great metaphor.
And I think one of the shock values to what you're saying is it caused our delegation here in Hampton Roads to probably look at things in a more cohesive fashion when they, when the national map was put up and that high-speed rail line went right past Hampton Roads, from Richmond to Petersburg down into the Raleigh area, it got a lot of attention here.
Yes, it did.
And we probably weren't out in this front as we should, don't know why. Admiral Taylor says we were asleep at the switch. Thelma Drake and them keep telling him, stop saying that. We weren't, but we were. When the map came out, there was no line to Hampton Roads.
No line coming to Hampton Roads.
So the Admiral was on point.
Is there a consensus to give Ray Taylor here sometime in the fall?
Yeah. Get him back.
Thank you, Sherry.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next item in the following vision, but we have a couple of late items, is the quarterly financial report. Section 12-6 of the City Code requires the city manager to make a quarterly financial report to council. And we look back in history and say, oops, we hate to start doing this. And so this is a challenging quarter, because this quarter ended June 30. But that's also the end of the fiscal year. And because it's the end of the fiscal year, and we operate on a modified accrual basis, which means that we have revenues that come in after June 30 that should be credited to the previous year, and we have expenditures the same way. So we run, as you'll see from Carol's presentation, a 45-day period to allow those accruals to process through. Forty-five days, vendor that is going to send us a bill should have sent us a bill for anything that we had purchased in June. So here's our update. Now, it's subject to change, because once the accruals come in, and we're in August, we'll have a better feel. But what we want to do is not only tell you about where we are with this quarter, which also is the end of the fiscal year, but lay out a schedule for these reports, and lay out a schedule, too, of the other reports that you need to get. For example, the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, or the audit. And so you'll see in this presentation a schedule for that. Carol?
Thank you, John. As John mentioned, going forward, we will be bringing counsel quarterly a financial report that gives you an overview of the city's fiscal condition. This quarter, because we're at the end of our fiscal year, and all we have is cash basis numbers, which at this point really aren't very meaningful, we are still completing the year-end closing, so it's kind of an awkward quarter for us to begin giving this presentation to you. We wanted to just let you know at a high level where we are and whether we expect any anomalies. The 45-day accrual period for revenues is from July 1 through August 15. And then we continue to accrue outstanding invoices, and if we, most of them generally come in within that 45-day period. But if we have any material or significant invoices that come in, right up until the point where we issue the audit report, we're going to accrue those back to the fiscal year so that we have proper matching. Just to give you a big-picture view of the year-end, we're still accruing the revenues, obviously. We're monitoring closely where we are and how that compares to budget. We expect that we should be very close to coming in on budget. We may be plus or minus, you know, probably less than 1 percent. But again, that's subject to what the final revenue accruals end up being. Likewise, the expenditures, we expect, based on our projections right now, to be slightly under budget, possibly 1 to 2 percent. We had, in total, the planned use of fund balance for fiscal year 2012-13 was just under $10 million. But if the expenditures come in under budget, obviously, that amount will end up being less. In addition to the accruals, we also do other adjustments, accounting entries, that we need to make in converting from a cash basis to a modified accrual basis. When we brought the proposed fiscal year 2013-14 budget to council this past April, we estimated at that time that we would end up with about $11.6 million over and above council's 15 percent policy limit for fund balance. Since that time, when council adopted the budget, Paul, you used $1.3 million of fund balance to provide additional funding to the schools. And we've also had some other uses of fund balance throughout the year. So the net available right now is projected to be about $10.3 million. Again, depending upon where we end up with the year-end, it may be more or less than that.
And we're thinking we're going to be about $2 million ahead at the end, right surplus this year? Is that what we're projecting?
Yes.
About $2 million?
Yes.
Okay. 1 to 2 percent, that dollar represents 5 to 10 million, or?
No.
Two and a half million to five?
Yeah, our budget is $231.4 million for the general fund.
So between 4 and, I mean, between 2 million and 4 million?
Correct. And so when we had gone to the rating agencies, we conservatively estimated that we would end up approximately $2 million under budget. But that, well, once we get past the year-end accrual period, we'll be, and you'll see in the calendar, we'll be coming back to council and giving you preliminary final results, and then we'll be giving the final CAFR when that's completed. This is our year-end timetable for getting through the year-end adjustments that staff, the finance staff needs to make, and the audit process. So we know right now where we ended on a cash basis, but as I mentioned earlier, that's not really meaningful, because we still have a lot of accrual work to do. Between now and August 15 is when we do those accruals and other adjusting entries. Then, between August 15 and the beginning of October, we do analysis and prepare work papers to give to the auditors, and we give them a binder for each of the city's 35 funds.
Get that, 35 funds?
Yes.
With the two largest funds being the general fund and the utility fund.
Right. And so there's a lot of work that goes into looking at each of those funds and making the entries that we need to make, including balance sheet entries as well. And as I mentioned earlier, even past that August 15 date, if we have significant invoices that come in that really should, that pertain to fiscal year 13, we have to accrue those back. And our auditors do what's called a search for unrecorded liabilities, to make sure that we have done that.
When you think you will have the, I know things will come in, but when you think you have a good number to give us?
Well.
Next slide, all right?
Yes, well, we will, the auditors will be in, right now, they're scheduled to be in here in October doing their fieldwork, and that will take several weeks. And then we'll draft the financial statements. Those statements have to be reviewed through several layers in our audit firm, including an outside quality control review. So all of that will come together in early to mid-November. Then, late November to early December is when we'll have the final comprehensive annual financial report available, and it'll be presented to council. So I have a calendar that I'll show you later, but our expectations that we'll come to you in early November with preliminary year-end results, again, subject to final audit adjustments. But at that point, we should have a pretty good idea of what our final year-end numbers look like.
Yeah. I would think you'd be giving me a good estimate before then.
Well, stay tuned. Let us.
Okay, all right. You're getting there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a challenge and a balance between giving you information that's timely and giving you information that's accurate. And, you know, we want to make sure that if we do give you preliminary results, that you understand that there could be further adjustments that need to be made. And we want to make sure that we're far enough through all of our year-end adjustments and other work beyond just doing the accruals, that we feel comfortable with the numbers and that they are fairly close to being firm.
Does the accruals include enterprise funds?
It would include all funds.
Okay, all funds.
And those are two finances for living. We understand the truth changes, you know, on any given day. But, you know, on October 15, if you'd like me to tell me something, what you think?
Each day that we go away from June 30, our numbers get better. And what we want to do is give you the best number. I mean, it's not that we're trying to put it under a bushel basket. We want to make sure that what we give you, we don't have to say, whoops, we made a mistake. We gave you a number that's too big.
And it won't be a mistake if it's the best information you got on that day.
Well, and that's why.
And if it was coming the next day, something that you didn't foresee, you tell me that the next day.
Well, we're prepared to come back. Once the August 15 date, we'll have a discussion in September about where we are for the June 30 fiscal year, the fiscal year that ended June 30.
Is that August 15 date for accruals, is that arbitrary number, or is that specified in?
It's GAAP, for Modified Accrual.
Yes, okay. Standard.
Okay, standard accounting practices.
Yes. And so all cities throughout the state and the country follow that same process. And I will say, too, that the schedule is also very typical. There are some cities that are smaller, that have less complicated, less complex financial information that are able to get done a little bit sooner.
They don't have 35 funds.
Right. And surely they have the variety of funds, such as the, you know, the social services and VHS. We have to be interacting with the state and making sure that we're doing handshaking. And there's testing that has to be done under the Single Audit Act for federal money that's received, and that takes some work as well.
Is the school system following that practice of accruals?
Yes, they are.
Because they have to operate on a GAAP, too.
That's right.
Yeah. And now, if your question is, are there encumbrances following GAAP, that's a different question.
Well, that's an important question.
It is a very important question.
And what's the answer?
Probably not.
Because we.
We think not.
And the reason why I mention that, because we had that conversation, and I believe I'm correct, my colleagues can weigh in on it, that they said they were going to start, going to change that and start including those encumbrances.
We have a section of this report that deals with that.
Oh, okay.
And we are making progress on trying to turn that ship around.
Okay.
Let me go back to.
The board is a mean of a good one. I was saying, the school board is a mean of a working together that is a cohesive and coherent board, both of them are.
Remember the audit report that you get, and we call it the audits, the CAFR? Most, all of that report is done by us, and the auditors.
All of it, except for their opinion.
Yeah. The auditors come in and they do a test, and they check the credibility of our financial statements. And that's what makes them independent. I mean, they're independent auditors, but we prepare the financial statements.
Do you recall what they said on their last, their opinion of the school board's budget last time?
They had.
Was it in the very back?
They had some findings.
That's right.
I mean, what you want to do, you want to work to have no findings in the opinion that the auditors give you on your financial statements. We're required by law to complete the CAFR and have the auditors look at it and do their tests and their quality control, and present it to you by December 31. And we met that last year, remember, and we really worked hard to get that done. This year, my goal is to try to shoot for the last meeting in November, and want to push that back as far as we can in order that you get it, you have time to look at it, put it on your nightstand, think about it, call us and ask questions before you consider a motion to receive and file the report. So you'll see that schedule in here.
How confident, the 6.4 we're going to get back? I mean, I know we're going to reallocate it back, but.
Well, we're still working this issue. They have identified $6.4 million worth of funds that they would like to have, that in the past were encumbered and never came back to council. The school board has asked you now to reappropriate those funds, which is progress, because there needs to be public discussion about this, not just amongst you, but the public needs to have the right to weigh in on how public funds are spent. So we're going through the process of trying to anticipate what questions you will ask. We have questions, and so there's a flurry of questions going back and forth, literally as latest today, about what are the details that make up the 6.4.
So if we appropriate 6.4 plus the 1.3, we gave. So, so, we reappropriate 6.4 plus the 1.3, we gave an extra 4 to 18 teachers, where would they put us for total appropriation for the year? And, and how would that compare to the appropriation for the previous year?
100% plus. You're giving one more million than what we, they had previous...
I'm thinking about 1.5, but I don't know.
See, the thing is, is that in the past, the encumbrances never came back to you. And, so, they were, they were encumbered, and were not part of the appropriation for the next year.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
But if, but if you put it in, if you put it in...
I understand your question.
You know what?
Yes, and let's do a side-by-side comparison for you.
Okay, you can bring that back to me.
Yes, sir.
That would be a good start, actually.
Yeah, it would.
It's a very good question.
And it's good that you got the school board staff to see that and the dialogue that you have going on with them. I think that's very effective in helping to make it better. And that's what we're aiming to do, to make the progress in the system better, and not penalize them because they didn't do it, but now's the time to move ahead.
I think the key also, too, is open communication, and the best way to do that is meeting with the two boards, for your questions can be directed. I guess I probably understand, having been on that other side of the board and at the budgeting part of it, and then seeing it coming on this side and seeing it from a different angle, but I, there is nothing there that we cannot get that information.
Well, you're absolutely correct, and...
That's right.
But I think the fact that they have asked that you reappropriate the funds is a, is a big step in the right direction. Now, whether or not you appropriate those funds, whether or not I come back and recommend as we get drilled down, I think there needs to be a good faith effort on our part to do some type of reappropriation. One of my concerns, and it's now become clear since the last council meeting, remember, we had counted on $3.4 million worth of funds coming back that were above, beyond the, the encumbrances. And when we first got that 6.4 number, it was not clear whether or not we're gonna get 3.4. And we put 3.4 there on purpose, and it was to kind of shut down the noise about the access, the excess money, and put it into the budget document that, yes, there is going to be money that's going to be returned back to the city. And so Carol's gonna cover that with the next slide, I think.
Yes, but just on the encumbrances, it appears that what they're asking council to reappropriate is just for the general fund, and we're trying to get an understanding of whether they have encumbrances in other funds, because encumbrances in all funds, all school funds would need to come back to council in order to be spent. And, and encumbrances by definition are not expenditures, and both their financial statements and ours are, clearly state that. So, you know, we, we are, you know, we're appreciative of the fact that they are making an effort to, to come back to council and get those funds reappropriated, but as John said, we're, we're still trying to get an understanding of what makes up that number, whether it really should be an encumbrance, and whether they're going to have any encumbrances for other funds that also need to come back. We also asked the schools to provide us with an estimate of how much money they expect to have remaining at the end of the year that will come back to the, to the city, either to come back to be used as part of the FY '14 budget as we had planned, and/or to be, to be returns for, for additional appropriation. And you may recall, we appropriated $3.4 million, and that was based on the, the school's estimate of what they expected to end the year with. Based on the information they've given us so far, it appears as though they estimate that they will return to the city exactly that amount and, to the penny, and every other amount that they had in their budget this year would either be encumbered or spent.
Right.
I can tell from your faces that you understood exactly.
Exact, exact math.
Very good, Carol.
That's right.
We've also included a slide on the utilities fund, because as John mentioned earlier, it's one of our other major funds. And, again, we, it's, it's too early to, to provide you with meaningful dollar amounts, but we did want to let you know that their, their budget appears to be on track. We don't expect any surprises. Their total budget for fiscal year 13 is 42 million, and that doesn't include the capital portion. The utilities fund operate, is an enterprise fund, it operates more like the private sector, so there's some accounting entries that we do for those funds that are different than what we do for governmental funds. And the next couple of slides are the proposed reporting schedule that we have put together to, to bring to you, regular reporting, not only on quarterly financial updates, but other financial forecasts and presentations throughout the year. The next quarter would be September 30th, and we're proposing to come back at your October 22nd meeting. And at that point, we would provide you with information not only on the quarter, but we'll, we'll give you whatever information we, we can comfortably give you about how we ended up the, the accrual period and where we are in the process. December 31st, we would present that quarter to you, and January 28th, and March 31st, we would present on April 22nd. Obviously, the January and April timeframe is also going to be a time where we'll be having discussions with you about what the upcoming proposed budget parameters are looking like. The fiscal year-end results, we plan to come back on November 12 with our, you know, we feel pretty good that these are final numbers, numbers. And then the final CAFR that would be presented to council and, and have the audit partner make that presentation would be on November 26 or December 10. We are, we are pushing really hard to, to make the earlier deadline. We want to get everything done and completed before the end of November. But we do, we do have new staff that are trying to get up to speed, and, and we're, we're putting processes in place, and we want to make sure that we also have time to do everything correctly. So, the December 10th date would be the latest that we would be coming to you.
Before we leave this slide, are you comfortable with this? We'll report a month after the quarter ends, that gives us time to do the work. We'll send it to you in advance of the meeting, so you're not seeing it cold in this room. In September, we'll have a preliminary report, a better report, on how June 30th ended. And then for sure, we'll have the November 12th, and we're shooting for this day to present the CAFR to you.
Only two weeks later.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned 35 funds. How does that compare with cities in Virginia of equal size? And, and I take it from the presentation, some of the delay is making sure that those 35 funds balance, or we have a handle on...
It's a gracious plenty, it's an awful lot.
Is there, is there room for consolidation?
Yes, sir.
Any recommendation gonna be forthcoming?
Yes, sir, and, and I think it gives us a chance to rethink. I mean, for example, we have a Willet Hall fund. Well, do we really need a Willet Hall fund?
I don't know.
As far as, just making it part of operating, sir.
They call it when they want it.
You have a parking authority fund, but we treat parking less like an authority and more like a, an operating department. So, we have these philosophical things that we need to address. And that's part, you know, when we had the discussion at the retreat about Willet Hall, that's one of the things I've asked our team to look at.
Right.
Why do we have this? When did we have it, and what use is it going forward?
And in general, any local government should have the fewest number of funds that are needed to, to segregate revenue that either because the, the operation is an enterprise, or because there's some legal or other restriction on the money that it needs to be accounted for separately, everything else should be going through the general fund. And we are looking at that, that list of 35 funds to identify not only funds such as the ones John mentioned, where there, there's a question as to whether it will ever be an enterprise, you know, profit-making entity, and whether it should just be folded into the general fund, but whether we set, have some funds that have been set up, you know, some number of years ago, that really don't have any of those kinds of restrictions on them, and should be instead put into the general fund and consolidated.
Your question is so good, Bill, I'm really glad that you asked it, because in this case, less is best.
Yes, because, because those funds, you know, all these funds can be, you know, it hinders transparency, and it can lend itself to a way to, places to hide money, you know, because people, we can't keep our eyes on, you got 35 funds versus 15, you know, we can keep our eyes on 15 and kind of, and kind of jump check, but 35, nobody, we, we can't do that. So, it only makes sense, we should, that's, that's too many funds. I don't know how you, well, I don't know how you track 35 funds.
Yeah, think, think about having 35 clay pigeons up in the air, and you got one shotgun to shoot it with. Yes, ma'am.
Bill, in all your time here, have you ever had a quarterly financial report like this?
No.
No.
Not at all?
No.
Not at all? And John alluded to that at the beginning of his presentation.
I mean, I believe, honestly, that at one time, the, there was some thought that the council created a finance committee to sort of do this, which obviously a committee of citizens couldn't do. This is fabulous.
Thank you.
It really is.
I'm gonna disagree with one thing, the social citizens could have done it, they just didn't have access.
Yeah, those who are right.
But we're not, we weren't paying them to do all this.
Right, but that group of people, somebody could have done it.
You were right.
They just didn't have the access to the...
My question about these 35 funds is that, I just feel that, you know, the book goes June 30th, you know, encumbrances deadline is August 15th. We shouldn't be halfway through the present fiscal year to, to, to let citizens know where we stand on, on the previous fiscal year. So hopefully, the consolidation would speed up that process, and we would, I don't know, we would know something September or so.
I think part of the thing, Bill, is that these are both elected bodies, and we're all accountable to the same public, and we should be able to get our information, because the public that elected us also elected them, and if you set up a timeline, we ought to all operate.
I'm comfortable that, that on that September 30th, they...
There you go.
They're gonna have a pretty, they're gonna be pretty close.
They're gonna be very much so.
And I might mention, too, that one of the challenges for us and all local governments is that we have to follow GASB, the Government Accounting Standard Board pronouncements. We're now up to, I think, 68 of those, and each one of those, and, and, you know, generally every year, we have at least one new one that we have to implement. The, the one that we'll be implementing now deals with in, with deferred inflows and outflows, and it's, you know, it's, it's a very technical, dense type of subject to get through, and so, you know, we, there is work that is involved in, in making sure that we comply with those pronouncements. And we, we just received notice a week or two ago that we, we received the GFPA, the Government Finance Officers Association's Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our fiscal year 2012 financial statements. And in order to do that, we, we need to make sure that we do comply with all of the, the GASB pronouncements, and that our, our financial statements reflect best practice in accounting and transparency.
And GASB justifies this by saying, you know, this is what makes your financial statements readable and transparent, and a true reflection of your financial health.
That's true.
And that's, you know, OPEB, for example, is the result of a GASB pronouncement. But, you know, GASB said, you know, it's a liability, and you need to, you need to reflect that as a liability. And if you don't, then you don't have a good report, you don't have a transparent report.
That's one, and that's one of the things we gotta talk about, the road, the road to fixing the OPEB.
Yes, sir.
We gotta have a serious, long-range conversation about that.
It's, it's not only numbers, as we discussed at the retreat, it's also the policy of how, how to limit that liability.
Very good presentation.
That's true.
One more slide. These are some other non-quarterly financial information that we want to present to you as well. We are, will be working on putting together some updated trends, trying to expand the presentation that we gave to you at the retreat, and in conjunction with that, doing a five-year financial forecast. That, that will serve as a, as a conduit for coming up with council parameters and, and what our expectations should be for the upcoming budget. It also gives us a longer-range view, so that we can see whether we have some, some widening of any gaps between revenues and expenditures, gives us time to, to do a thoughtful plan for how to make sure that those two lines don't, don't come apart in the long run. In January, we want to present you a mid-year budget forecast, where we think we'll end of the year at the six-month mark, and recommend if we need to, any adjustments, either positive or negative, on revenue and expenditures. And we're proposing to do that at the end of January. Obviously, as we did this year, we'll provide, we'll be providing to council throughout the adoption of the budget, updates on the proposed budget, what we think the major drivers will be and, and major challenges. And obviously, OPEB and how we address that liability will be one of the most significant ones.
And to give you a little preview of some of those drivers, OPEB being one, VRS being another, we know that we're facing a $2.4 million additional expenditure next year, if we did, did nothing else. Would you explain that to council?
Yes, the state, two years ago, approximately two years ago, gave localities an option to take a lower VRS rate, and essentially defer the impact of expected increases that they were projecting in their VRS rates. And Portsmouth took advantage of that opportunity, was a two-year reduction in the rate, and so our rate, which should have been over 11%, was 8.27%, and it will go back up next year. And on the general fund side, that will be approximately $2.4 million that we'll need to cover. So, we, we, we need to build that into our, into our forecast and into our budget planning. We also, as you may be aware, we've issued new debt for the courthouse, and that will be coming online and will be part of our, part of our debt service. And we did outline these challenges as part of the, the budget message this year, but I think it's good to remind you that we, we do have some, you know, some looming issues on the expenditure side that we're gonna need to make sure we can accommodate with our budget.
When do we start making those payments, the debt service on the new court?
I can, we, we just did the, we, we ended up issuing the debt a little earlier than we had planned because of, in order to take advantage of the interest rates. I can get you the, the exact date.
We accelerated it, because remember, we were, the original concept was wait until next year, next January to go to the market. And we wanted to get in the market quick and take advantage of these rates. So, it, it's as much as a six-month acceleration of the payment.
Okay.
At the same time, as we discussed, we now have the, the money, for example, to pay off the lien on City Hall and remove the deed of trust.
Yeah, and the, the payments will begin next fiscal year, but we can get you the exact...
And if we do that, we need to net present value that, because that's, that's a chunk of money.
When are, when are we gonna pay the, get the lien...
That's what we're working on now.
The net present value.
That's right. And now, you, you understand what I'm saying, is that if we were to pay, if we were required to pay 9.4 million in January, and that's roughly the amount...
Yes.
Yeah. Then, what is 9.4 million worth today? It's a discounted amount.
Right.
I see what you're saying.
Because he gets his money early. He, he gets to use that money.
And put it into the stock market.
Yeah.
Is this gonna be...
Or pay his bank, or whatever.
This is gonna be done, done soon?
Sir.
Sooner than later?
Yes, sir. You, you gave us that task, remember?
I want, I...
Get, get us, get rid of that deed of trust.
That was an option.
We took that to heart.
And the revenues, Carol, did you, did you see any trends like, you know, getting better? And I'm talking about lodging tax and individual...
Our lodging sales ta, lodging tax or sales tax, even this year, our personal property tax had, you know, it's not, it's not a growth rate that you would equate to the boom-boom years, but, you know, it's better than flat. The, you know, the one area that we'll need to work closely with the assessor's office on is what, what the trends are with our overall property values. And, you know, keep in mind that that's a lagging revenue source, because by the time the, the market... the, the market changes, it takes time for that to work its way through the assessment and to the tax bill.
And that's, and that's the shame, not the shame, that's the pity, I guess you might say, of our revenue source. It's, it's taxed on value. It's, the Latin word for that is ad valorem. And so our big, two biggest sources of revenue relate to things that are valued, real estate and personal property. If the value goes up, our revenue goes up. If the value goes down, our revenue goes down.
And, you know, obviously, as Sherry mentioned, Portsmouth, we should be concerned and our neighbors and, you know, cities and counties throughout the state are very concerned about any momentum around eliminating machinery and tool tax and the D-Pole because that, that could be a significant reduction in revenue for us.
That's right.
So we'll have to be watching that very closely and advocating for the, to maintain the city's revenue base.
And it's a paradox because, I mean, your question was really good about, you know, what's the chamber's position on this? I mean, if we want to make our, our community conducive for people to thrive business-wise, and then they will tell you that, well, okay, reduce my tax. And so we, we're stuck in that paradox. And there is momentum picking up about eliminating the D-Pole.
Okay.
If they do, then they need to come back. Here's a alternate way, it's not regressive.
Make us whole.
Okay.
All right.
You satisfied?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Our next, we have two late items. Bill had asked for a quick report on Victory, and then we wanted to discuss with you the letter that we all received today from VDOT. So listen, here's the Victory report, if that's okay with you. This is a status report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council. If you remember, about maybe two and a half months ago, Mr. Williams appeared before you with some ideas that they were looking at to modify Victory Village. Staff has met with their representatives on at least three occasions and had numerous phone calls. The first discussion was, what do you want to do? Second was, how are you going to, to get there? And then finally was, guys, what's your timeline? They've come back and we've discussed, if you remember, Victory Village had a very detailed concept plan. It actually got down to how many parking places and where they were going to be located, which made it extremely difficult to build. We've discussed with them the idea of creating what we call a bubble concept plan. It says, in this area, we're going to be putting the hotel motel, in this area, we'll be putting the offices, and then in this area, we would be using retail or a mixture. With the idea that the design guideline book that was developed would guide the construction types and the materials that would be used. That way, we would get away from this very detailed building this way, shaped like this, like this, and allow the market some flexibility as they move along. That was the concept plan. The second part of that was actually looking at the regulations that were developed for the MXEMP district. And the idea was, as, yes, we can look at this, but we don't want to throw the whole thing out and start over and come in with a concept that's what we would say lower in, in quality and quantity of, of what they propose to be building. They have come back saying that they are proposing some new uses in the district that may be, that would of course have to be reviewed and approved by you. But we felt like it was important that their neighbors, the people that live around it that will be affected by the development needed to weigh in before it becomes to you for, for review, so at least you have the knowledge of how it's viewed. Those neighbors would be the stakeholders, the TCC, schools, Newport, the Cavalier Manor communities. Those types of individuals, bring them together, show them what they're wanting to do, explain how they want to change the ordinance, get their input, and then be bringing that entire package through the Planning Commission to you. Timeline, they have missed the deadline for the September Planning Commission meeting, so if at best they come in, it would be at the October Planning Commission for a change in the, in concept plan as well as the regulations. And that would be coming before you in November at the best.
Did some of the civic leaders weigh in on it and actually approve some of the changes he was advocating?
That's what we were asking.
We need to do that.
And the reason why I think it's important that we have a conversation on this because that, that Newport project, that needs a jump start. It, since the, you know, I guess the Sandler's struggles that coincided with the, the economy conditions, it's just flat out there. And it's not doing that area a service, not doing our city, nothing's on the tax rolls. And understand the developer, the other, the developer, original developer, the Sandler's, they're on a build one, sell one.
That's right.
Short leash with the financial institutions, so Bob's project seemed, you know, his guy's willing to put some money out there and get things started. So, I, I just want to be assured that we are working with him.
We, we are.
Okay.
Remember, when you met, last met with Bob, he brought in Bill Hudgens. Bill Hudgens, we worked together with Bill to do the Tri-City Development, Old Dominion at the boundary between Portsmouth and Suffolk. The third city is Chesapeake, but it's right there as you go west on 164, the Western Freeway. Bill did the town center. And his message to you was, it's whatever, it's gotta be doable within the market. And it puts us in a paradox because we don't want the, the bar to be so low that all you have to do is just step over. You have a vision that you want to maintain there, but you want it to be realistic. And so, what you said, okay, if you want to change the plan to be market-responsive, get with it. And you put the ball in their court. And we told them, okay, the timeline, you're the driver of this, we want it done quick. But you need to get community input. We've got a $60 million investment with TCC. They need to have a say in what's gonna be next door to them. Newport, the residential, needs to have a say. Our school there needs to have a say. Cavalier Manor, a well-established neighborhood, needs to have a say.
Well, there are a lot of stakeholders, obviously, but we, we, we need to get something going. I mean, Victory Village, a prime example, the new retailer went out there, certainly not a Dillard's. If we would hold out for a Dillard's, Saks, Fifth Avenue, we'd be waiting to, the Ice Age came back, quite frankly. So you got, you gotta face reality of where the market is. Obviously, you can't compromise so much, but you also gotta be realistic on where the market is and where the potential market is for that area.
We've very clearly told them during all of the meetings that this is a prime development, not a development. And that it is, they're gonna have to, the, the vision has always been there, that this will be something we will be proud of for 50 years. The guidelines are guidelines, not suggestions. And, you know, that's, that's the message we keep saying to them, you've got to be bringing something in that is positive for the city of Portsmouth. And that's, I feel like, the suggestion, comments that we've gotten.
I mean, TCC really raised the bar out there. I mean, they're building a good product. One thing about the Newport, the last two phases, is there any way the city can be left holding a bag on those bonds?
No, they're not obligations of the city and we put no pledge against them. It's called a Community Development Authority, the CDA.
Yep.
And it has its own board. And these bonds trade at a more expensive interest rate because they don't have the full faith and credit behind the city. And as a lot is sold, the person buying the lot agrees to pay a portion of the debt service for the term of the bonds.
Right.
Let's say it's 20 years. And so they know that in addition to whatever the price is, that they'll be paying $362 if that's the amount.
Have you looked at the last two phases, what it's gonna cost per lot?
I haven't personally, but I do know that.
It's very high.
Well, yeah. But what I was about to say though is that the CDA, we have an issue too. We want to make sure that they're current on their, on their real estate taxes. I mean, they're not tax exempt, whether the land is subdivided or not, or sold or not, they still owe us the value that Jamie puts on the, on the property.
Lots.
And if they're not selling the lots, then that, that tax burden is on the developer. And we, there's, there's some property out there that's in their rears, if I remember correctly from Jimmy. Do you remember exactly the, let me get that number for you.
But the last two phases, when we, when we looked at the deal, it'd be hard, it's gonna be very hard to put the product that it's owned for there, even if it's a single-family house.
I think your point is very valid. I think that probably, if not this year, a year or so down the road, you might have a request for every zoning to change the density. But that, I can't predict what that will be.
Right.
And Bill, the developer told you, someone, we checked that out and that's not.
That's not true.
Why did you say that?
I don't know. I don't have.
Sympathy?
I think maybe just over the year.
Yeah.
I mean, and I'm not trying to be ugly about that, but it, it intrigued me and we, we checked it out and it's not, it's not valid.
They have been, of the last, I'm gonna say 10 permits issued for residents, eight of them wore spec and they're selling, but they are not having to wait until they get a signed contract now to build it. They're able to build a unit on the site that we've approved for that site and then offer it for sale. So they are away from the, it's gotta be sold before they can build it.
It's just at a snail's pace.
That's right. Did you have?
No, you know, the thing that I'm just thinking about it, from the very beginning, we were some of the people out there and we met with developers and we talked about what was going to be out there. And the civic league is not going to back down on some of the requests that were there in that city. We did not get all of the things, but many of the things were put out there as like butterflies to attract people to invest in the area. And one of the key things was a swimming pool, because that was the old Norfolk County. And a many people bought out there. And it was only after then that they invested in the education. I can write the history on that area because I was out there with the weeds and everything else. But the thing is that there, the residents are not going to accept anything that's second class or anything that's going to, in any way, dilate the integrity and the pride of those that were out there at the very beginning, fighting the ditches and everything else. And George T. McLean's building of, I can write the history on it because I was out there with them. The thing is, we need to follow through with it. And what was proposed at the Newport area has been changed twice. Tidewater Community College is the only thing that's gone through in there that was part of a proposal, a college in that part of the city. So I, I think we need to really study and work with the developers and the residents because I know Jim Hawley was one of those that was out there, who pushed for many of the things that was there. And my husband happened to have been one out there too. But the thing is, let's make sure we know what the people are visualizing with, the people that we have in there and our religious leaders out there, before we try to dictate to the community what we feel ought to be out there. The same thing goes, and I'm very emotional about it because I watched what happened with the so-called mall and the shopping center and things out there. Once you put out there on a table of what it is you're planning and doing, don't short change the residents out there. Many of the founding fathers and sisters in this city came out of Cavalier Manor. And I don't think we need to lose sight of that heritage or history.
That's true. Yeah, I think they said most of what I want to say, but briefly, I, I think Fred and John, you guys are on the right track because we, we made it very clear, you know, to the developer, we, we didn't want anything substantial.
That's right.
We have substantial investment out there and that, and we need to protect that. And that the vision for that changes, it has to come back to us first because we sold the vision to, to the community. And so that changes, we need to be the ones who sell a new vision to them or talk to them. We can't let the developer dictate that. So, so, so I, so I don't mind you guys holding, holding the developer accountable and letting them, we, we are gonna raise the bar. And we're not, we're not gonna lower the bar just to get something built. I mean, we, but I'd rather wait, wait, wait a minute to get it right because we don't get another chance to redo it. I mean, not, not in most of our lifetimes anyway. So, you know, I, I applaud you. Keep up, keep up the good work and just get it done, just get it done right. We want it done as fast as we can, but we want it done right.
Are they, is, is Tri-City Developers or whatever the company's name is, are they actually meeting with citizens on things or?
That's the plan.
I mean, are they?
We've suggested that they have to go and make the arrangements and for them to do that.
But do you know if they are?
They have got a list of names that they were going to be contacting. I don't have a date or.
I don't think they have started that. I mean, we're, yeah.
Okay, you have one more item.
But, Bill, you asked a question about Newport, which is the residential development. How cool is this? Brandon just sent me a text that says, Phase One is delinquent in the amount of $100,000 and change. Phase Two, $600,000 and change. And Phase Three, $424,000 and change.
Delinquent and.
Taxes and real estate.
I think, I think we need to.
Jimmy's doing it. I mean, Jimmy, we're, every piece of correspondence we get that relates to that, I flip it to Jimmy.
Give me those three again. Phase One is how much?
I'll leave you exactly.
104 and 6.
$100,524.67 for Phase One. Phase Two is $604,982.34. And Phase Three is $424,906.17.
And that's for Newport?
For Newport.
I think, George, I got, you got some work to do, buddy.
The city treasurer's, the city treasurer's gonna be, he's on top of it.
Jimmy's aggressive.
He is very aggressive.
Well, that, that sounds good, but I think we need to be updated on the status of that pretty frequently.
We will. Yes, sir. Consider it done.
Okay.
All right, last item. Last item. Roslin, in case you don't have your copy, has a copy of the letter that we got from the.
Yes, sir.
How are we giving them building permits if they're that far behind on taxes?
That's a good.
That's a good question, Dan.
Yeah, because the builder's not behind on the tax, it's the CDA that's behind.
Do you have an answer for that? Come, come around.
What we've said is that they must show proof of taxes being paid for the lot that is being built on prior to the issuance of any permits. So when they have a lot, they have to come in, make those payments on those taxes.
That's a good prior. It was right before me. Because these are taxes on the, on the lots that have not yet been sold. When the lot is sold and ready for a house to be constructed in order for the building permit to be issued, it's gotta be current on that lot.
We require Jimmy Williams' office to provide a document as part of the building permit package that they are current and paid for that, that lot without a, without a motion of permit.
This letter, are you ready to go?
Yeah, let's move on. Yes, please.
This letter is only a page and a half, but it's, and the term outrageous is used in the first page. The letter itself is outrageous.
It is.
It has some hyperbole in it, to say the least, to say it kindly. And I would recommend that if they want to meet with us, fine, they can come here and meet with, with us. The threat that's on the second page, we want to meet with you to discuss this and other projects, that is unprecedented. I mean, here is the state throwing its weight around, trying to be a bully over an issue that's been declared by the court to be unconstitutional.
They said it must be rectified immediately.
I'd like to ask George, are we legally, legally tackled? Can they send us bail like this? This is just a letter from somebody in Richmond, and this is not a lawsuit, and they are proposing to talk. We don't know what their intentions are, but they are asking to talk as opposed to sending us some sort of legal documents. So we will see whether they're, they're proposing this to talk, whether they're proposing to talk in good faith or whether they're just using it as part of a checklist to say, well, we met with them and then they, they didn't give in to us, so we had no recourse except to file suit. And if we end up in the court, we'll end up in court, and that's, that's just the nature of it. But council's been strong in terms of its position on these tolls, on a position supporting the litigation as well as Judge Cales's decision. And we honestly, we debated whether to discuss this in closed meeting, in closed session or an open session, but we felt that, that this was, this was worthy of just letting the public know what we, what we have received from the state and what our plan is to deal with it.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
You're done. Thank you very much.
Now, I'll just ask you later.
Leave it alone. That's fine. Are we done, sir?
Yes, sir. Well, what we'll do, we'll write back saying, we're willing to be, please contact Portsmouth, give us some dates, and make it the briefest possible letter. We did discuss this letter with the attorney for the plaintiffs. We're all still on the same page. This is a very unique deal, as you well know. A deal, first, that goes 58 years out, a deal in which rates are set outside the General Assembly, outside the purview of the State Corporation Commission. As you know from George, ERC has taken us, filed the legal papers with the State Corporation Commission, trying to get the State Corporation Commission to compel us to move on.
The interesting thing is that the State Corporation Commission would normally participate in setting of, in the setting of tolls and the setting of those sort of rates, but they're not bound by, claim not to be bound by the act, but yet they want to go back to the State Corporation Commission to force us to grant the approvals that they need in order to pursue the project.
There's a paradox here. I mean, they want their cake and they want...
If it weren't so serious, it would be humorous.
God, they give them a stop work order, and then you can charge them $10,000 a day if they get a court.
But the, the interesting thing is, is that we've got the state sort of coming heavy-handed down on us. They've got some serious issues that they have to, that they have to deal with, obligating, obligating the state beyond the revenues of the project. The, the, the state code provides under this particular act that if you go into default on a project, you only pay off the, you only pay off the loans to the extent of the revenues. Well, if there are no tolls, then there are no revenues.
Revenues, yeah.
So the other thing is, is they, they obligated the state to, to pay off the TFIAs loans, the federal loans, and that's almost unprecedented, if not unprecedented. Normally, there's no recourse to the locality and those, and those sort of things. The private investor, the private enterprise has that responsibility. So there are a couple of things that they've gone way beyond the pale to make this deal happen.
And remember, we got three branches in government, and neither one of them is supreme over the other. And it's, it's as if the General Assembly is not a player in this. Well, the General, General Assembly set the policy. You're not to obligate the state, not beyond the revenues of the project.
That's true.
And that got blown off.
Okay. We'll get that letter out. Madam Clerk?
I'll have one from EDA, but I'll have to email it to you because I'm, we're late on putting it together.
I did, Mayor colleagues, I did meet with the Sports Hall of Fame as their liaison, met with David Tinch and Eddie Webb. They were continuing on their, their quest to attract more events, i.e. weddings, birthday parties and such. They, they say that they're getting a lot of traction on that, which should help their revenues. So that was about it.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We have no closed session items. We are recessed, as you said.
Okay. Thank you all very much.